Alright, so chapter three, the safe food handler. So this chapter, um, the study questions that we're gonna go over are how can food handlers avoid behaviors they can contaminate food? How should staff wash and care for their hands? What is the correct way to dress for work and handle work clothes? Where can staff eat, drink, smoke, and chew gum or tobacco to minimize contamination? And what is the best way to prevent staff maybe carrying pathogens from working with or around food or from working in the operation? So food handlers, um, can contaminate food by having a foodborne illness, um, wounds or boils that contain a pathogen, um, seizure or coughing. As it's shown in the book, um, in the pictures to the left, um, when they have a contact with a person who is ill. And when they use the restroom and do not wash their hands. So we talked a lot about this last week. Um, in chapters one and two, um, oral to fecal contamination. Um, and then when they have symptoms such as diarrhea, vomiting, or jaundice, yelling of the eyes or skin. And we also talked about that, um, last week. Um, with norovirus and hepatitis A. And different, um, illnesses like that. So some actions that can contaminate food are scratching the scalp, running fingers through the hair, wiping or touching the nose. Rubbing an ear, touching a pimple or an infected wound or boil, wearing and touching a dirty uniform. Coughing or sneezing into the hand or spitting into, in the operation. So some ways as, uh, ma- of food handler manager that you can, um, navigate these issues. Are by creating personal hygiene policies for your staff to follow, training food handlers on those policies and retraining them regularly. Modeling the correct behavior at all times, supervising food safety practices at all times, and revising personal hygiene policies when laws or science changes. So that's like one thing, um. That would have had to go on when COVID happened. So like people started wearing masks in the restaurants. That would be an example of revising policy. Um, when, you know, laws change or health regulations change, um. So moving on now to hand washing and hand care. Um, so this is the main way to prevent spreading pathogens. So hands have to be washed in a sink designated for hand washing. They cannot be washed in a sink that is designated for food preparation. Um, so all hand washing sinks must be wa- must be marked, um, that they are designated for hand washing only. And there should be no food preparation in that sink. Um, and then, you know, you wanna notify your employees, um, and train them to know to not wash their hands in the food preparation sinks either.
For the apply your knowledge, do you have the answers for it? Was, do you have the answers for apply your knowledge?
Yeah, so we're gonna, for now, we're gonna skip the apply your knowledges, just for a second time. But, um, for this one, we wanna write an X next to number two and number three. Um, so number two, she's touching a dirty uniform. And then number three, he's touching his ear.
Okay, but I had checked for it.
He's gonna go back and touch, you know, the food after touching his ear. So the correct way to wash hands, um, is wet hands and arms. So you wanna wet, not just your hands, but sometimes like food might touch. Your wrists or your lower arms. So you wanna make sure you're washing, you're washing your arms and wrists as well. Um, applying soap, scrubbing hands and arms vigorously for, uh, for ten to fifteen seconds. Usually you'll see people just like splash a little water. Uh, just, you know, shake them up a little bit and rinse them out. You wanna make sure you're getting up your fingernails, um, the back of your hands and between your fingers. Um, your wrists. And your palms, um, rinse hands and arms thoroughly with running warm water and drying hands and arms, um, with. A single-use paper towel or a hand dryer. Single-use paper towel is the best way. Um, hand dryers sometimes grow a lot of bacteria inside of them. So a single-use paper towel is the best way, um, to dry your hands because it won't, you know. Reintroduce any pathogens onto your hands that you just cleaned off. So when to wash hands is awesome important. Um, this. Can take away from, um, cross-contamination. And then like spreading pathogens after touching something. So you wanna wash your hands after using the restroom, touching body or clothing, coughing, sneezing, blowing nose, or using a handkerchief or tissue. Eating, drinking, smoking, or chewing gum or tobacco. Handling soiled items, handling raw meat, seafood, or poultry, and taking out garbage. Handling service animals or aquatic animals, hitting chemicals that might affect food safety. Changing tasks. So before beginning a new task, leaving and returning to the kitchen or prep area, handling money. Using electronic devices and touching anything else that may contaminate hands such as dirty equipment, work surfaces, or cloths. So if you see someone that's not using to follow the proper procedures, um. And they are touching things in the kitchen, you wanna dispose of the contaminated food that they may have touched, um, after, you know, doing one of these things that we just mentioned. That you're supposed to wash your hands after, um, cleaning the equipment, equipment that they touched. So this could be, um, utensils, pots, pots and pans, um, counter spaces, maybe wipe those down, things like that. Um, and you wanna retrain and coach food handlers who aren't following the proper procedures. So you won't have to take so much time into cleaning after, um. They touch those things over and over again, or running the risk of pathogens getting into the food, making people sick in a restaurant. Um, and then that'll mitigate a lot of risk and, um, time that you'll have to take. To follow back after, up after that. So hand ta- hand antiseptics, um, also known as hand sanitizers can be used, but. We don't really wanna use them, um, as often, and we don't wanna use them in place of hand washing. They can be used after, but not in place. And we don't wanna touch anything until the antiseptic is dry on hands. So some hand care guidelines, um, are fingernailing. So we wanna make sure our nails are short, um. And clean, so there's not really a chance to get any dirt or, um. Like any soiled substances underneath them, um, cuz that carries a lot of bacteria. Um, wearing false fingernails, um, they can keep a lot of bacteria or dirt underneath them. As well as break off into the food, um, but you can wear. False fingernails if you're wearing gloves over top of them, or nail polish as well, um. Nail polish hides dirt under the fingernails. So we wanna avoid wearing nail polish. And if we, and it does chip off sometimes, and that can get into the food as well. So we wanna, um, make sure if we do have nail polish on, that we wear gloves on our hands.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So infected wounds or boils to contain. Those boils while we're preparing food, um, we wanna make sure that there is a barrier between the boil or the wound. And the food. So if you have something on your hand, you wanna bandage it and then put a glove on. So there's a watertight barrier, um, between the wound and the food that you're preparing. Um, if something is, you know, on a different part of your body, you just wanna make sure it's bandaged and it's covered, um, when you're around the food. So we're gonna skip over that apply your knowledge. Um, and just for reference, all the answers to the apply your knowledge are in the back of each chapter. If you wanna, um, read over it and then go over it later.
No, okay, I mean, I looked, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's one for this chapter. It's on page three point two four and three point two five.
Okay. I see.
So when we're handling, um, food, we wanna use single-use gloves. So single-use gloves, um. Are gonna protect the food from anything that can be on your hands, dirt, pathogens, things like that, um. And you're gonna use them when handling ready-to-eat food. So the gloves you wanna buy are approved gloves, um. They're approved for food service. You don't wanna just go buy a random glove, um, because it's not, it's not meant for that reason. Um, some gloves disintegrate with oils sometimes, um, or they let like different things permeate through them. We're gonna make sure it's like a solid glove meant for food handling. Um, the glove should be disposable. You should never wash gloves, um. Once the gloves are used and they're taken off, they need to be thrown in the trash. Um, providing multiple sizes to your employees is also important. Um, if there's a glove that's too small, it might rip. While someone's, um, preparing food, and if it's too big, it might just come off. Um, and then providing latex alternatives. Some people are allergic to latex. So that could be the people you're preparing the food for, or the people who are preparing the food. So you wanna make sure that, you know, we have options, um, when it comes to the type of gloves we wanna use. So how to use gloves? Wash your hands before putting on gloves and starting a new task. So you don't need to change, um, your gloves each time you start your new ta- you're performing the same task, but, um. You wanna make sure your hands aren't contaminated. So if they are contaminated, you'll need to wash your hands and then put on new gloves. Um, selecting the correct glove size, like I just mentioned, some gloves are too big, won't stay on, and then those are too small, it's terrible. Holding gloves by the edge while putting them on. So. The purpose of the glove is to protect the food from your hands. So we don't wanna touch the surface of the glove. It's gonna be touching food. So we wanna use the edge of the glove to pull it on rather than touching this area or this area. And then check, check the gloves for rips or tears once you put them on. So some things we don't wanna do are blowing the gloves, um, roll them to make them easier to put on. Or wash and reuse them, like I just mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
So once you change gloves, um, you wanna change them if they become dirty or torn before beginning a different task. After an interruption, like taking a phone call, um, that kinda defeats the purpose of using a glove. Could you, you know, touch your phone with the glove? Um, after handling raw meat, seafood, or poultry, and before handling ready, ready to eat food. So raw meat, seafood, or poultry carry a lot of contaminants. So that's a lot of, um, cross-contamination if you don't, if you don't throw the gloves away, touch something else. And then after four hours of continuous use, so you wanna make sure we have fresh gloves and they're not susceptible to rips or tears. Um, so that's the reason behind changing them so often. Well, not so often, that's not really that often, but, um. You know, four hours is a decent amount of time. So we wanna make sure that, you know, the gloves aren't gonna disintegrate while we're doing tasks. So you don't wanna use, um, your bare hands on ready-to-eat food. That's the purpose of using gloves. Um, but you can use, um, your bare hands on food that is being prepared to cook. So, um, you can use bare hands on food that will be added as an ingredient to a dish. That doesn't contain raw meat, seafood, or poultry, but will be cooked. So the example here is adding cheese to a piece of dough. So that's a ready-to-eat food, but that food is gonna be cooked again. So it's gonna kill anything that you might've, you know, passed with your bare hands, um. Or the food will be added as an ingredient, as an ingredient to a dish containing raw meat, seafood, or poultry. And the dish will be cooked to the required minimum internal temperature of the raw items. So adding seasoning to, um, poultry or anything, it's gonna be cooked. So you can use, um, bare hands for that. So moving on to eating, drinking, smoking, and chewing gum or tobacco. So drops of saliva can get. Um, can be spread through the kitchen, um, when doing any of these things. So you wanna make sure, uh, you're using the proper steps when doing these things. So you don't wanna, um, eat, drink, smoke, or chew gum or any of those things when prepping or serving food. Working in prep areas or working in areas used to clean utensils and equipment, any equipment such as like a dish pit or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um. If you are to, um, drink in a kitchen, you wanna make sure it has a closed, covered container. And you're handling it in the right way. So some working attire guidelines are hair restraints. So you wanna wear a clean hat or other restraint when in a food prep area, so food doesn't, or hair doesn't fall into the food. Also, um, men that have large beards or long beards might need to wear a net so their beard hair doesn't fall into the food. Um, so you don't wanna wear any hair accessory that could fall out and get into the food, um, or false eyelashes cuz they might fall off and get into the food as well. Um, wearing clean clothing, so. Dirty uniforms or aprons can be a point of cross-contamination. Um, if you're getting, say, juices from raw chicken. And then touching your apron and then touching, you know, another item, that can lead to cross-contamination. So you wanna make sure, you know. Your clothes are clean, your aprons are clean, things like that, um. Aprons, you know, that's another thing, um, we mentioned last week, not wearing apron in a restroom. Because a lot of pathogens can get on the apron that way, and jewelry. So the main. Um. The only jewelry you really wanna wear in the kitchen is maybe like a necklace or like a wedding band, but other than that, you shouldn't be wearing any jewelry.
Mm-hmm.
And then moving on to reporting illnesses. So staff should always report illnesses before coming into the job, into the workplace. Um, and then letting know immediately. If they get sick while working, um, they should let you know so you can take the proper precautions. Um, so you wanna exclude employees if they're vomiting, have diarrhea, um, jaundice. I know we talked about that last week, um, with hepatitis, it's yelling of the eyes and skin. Um, sore throat with fever, with fever, and infected wound or boil that is open or draining unless it's properly covered with like a bandage or something.
Hmm.
Um. And then staff must also tell you when they've been diagnosed with norovirus, hepatitis, chagella, chikatoxin-producing e. coli. Or salmonella typhi or nystifoidal salmonella. Um, and then they may, must also tell you if they live with someone who has any of those diseases as well. So some things you can watch for concerning staff illness is vomiting, excessive trips to the bathroom. Yelling of the skin, eyes, and fingernails, cold sweats or chills, persistent nasal discharge and sneezing. So now we're going to, um, look at the chapter review case study. So Robert is a food handler, handler at a deli. It is seven forty-seven AM, and he is just looking up. He is scheduled to be at work and ready to go by eight AM. When he gets out of bed, his stomach feels squeezy. He blames out on the beer he had the night before. Fortunately, Robert lives only five minutes from work. Despite this, he does not have enough time to take a shower. He grabs the same uniform he wore the day before when prepping kitchen, chicken. He also puts on his watch and several rings. When Robert gets to work, he realizes that he has left his hat at home. Robert is greeted by an angry manager. The manager puts Robert to work right away, loading the rotisserie chicken, rotisserie with raw chicken. Robert then moves on to serving a customer who orders a freshly made salad. Robert is known for his salads and makes the salad to the customer's approval. Robert made several errors. Identify as many as you can on the lines below.
Hmm. Well, he didn't take a shower. He put on a dirty apron and, um. He also was sick. He didn't know one way or the other. Was it the beer? Or was it, um, something else? But regardless, his manager put him straight to work even without having the hat. He left his hat, what happened to the hairnet. And he was dealing with raw, raw foods. So that definitely can bring up, um, the contamination to the food. And the salad, the salad was, um, um, I believe could be contaminated as well.
Right. So the other thing he also didn't do was remove his jewelry.
Right, right.
So that was one of the things that he should have, um, done in that situation.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he put him right to work.
So we are going to, um. Skip over the study questions and move on to chapter four. So if you wanna do the study questions later on, like, kinda like as a quiz for yourself, you can do that with, um, the answers on three point two two.
Okay.
Okay, so chapter four, the flow of food and introduction. So study questions for this chapter are how can you prevent cross-contamination? How can you prevent time-temperature abuse? And what is the correct way to use and maintain the thermometers? So the flow of food is how, you know. It starts from when you purchase the food to when you serve the food to a customer. So steps are purchasing, receiving, storing, preparation, cooking, holding, cooling, reheating, and service.
Yeah, so.
So we did talk about, um, cross-contamination and time temper- temperature control, um, previously, but just to go over that again, just for refresher. Um. Cross-contamination is just spreading, um, pathogens from either foods or unwashed hands to other food. Um, that may not contain those, um, pathogens. So you wanna make sure, you know, you're washing hands, you're washing utensils, you're wiping, um, prep areas, sanitizer, things like that. And then time-temperature control is when you are not, um. Cooking food to the right temperature or leaving food out at a temperature that is not supposed to be. So, um. Leaving cold foods out at room temperature or leaving hot foods out at room temperature, that's a way for bacteria to grow. Um, and then things such as not cooking chicken to the proper internal temperature can also make people sick. So some guidelines for preventing cross-contamination between foods are using separate equipment for raw and ready-to-eat food.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cleaning and sanitizing before and after tasks. Having raw and ready-to-eat food at different times. And then buying prepared foods.
Oh.
So some ways to avoid time-temperature abuse are to monitor, um, your food. So knowing which food items should be checked, um, how often and by who, um. Is a way, using tools, so making sure you have the right thermometers to measure the temperature of the food. To make sure it's still at a viable temperature before you have to dispose of the product, um. Recording, so recording the temperatures of the food regularly, um. So this could also go with recording the temperatures of your refrigeration. Or your freezer to make sure that it's at the right temperature, um, so nothing's broken. And making sure that all the food stays where it's supposed to be. Um, time and temperature control. So having procedures to limit, um, the time food spends in the temperature danger zone. So you don't wanna remove too much food from the fridge if you're not gonna use it, right? So.
Right.
If it's out for so long, that's a hazard. So we wanna make sure we're just only taking some out at a time. Um, and then putting it back immediately and not letting it sit at a room temperature for too long. Um, and then corrective actions to making sure food handlers know what to do when time and temperature standards are not met. So. The example here is holding soup at a, on a steam table and letting the temperature fall below a hundred and thirty-five degrees. So after two hours, um, you wanna reheat it to the right temperature or throw it out. After that, it's just not seen as a viable food anymore because it has been, um, time-temperature abused.
Hmm.
So let's move to the, um. Types of probes on page four point eight. So a big part in, um, time-temperature, avoiding time-temperature abuse is being able to, um. Measure the temperature of different foods, different, um, surfaces, um, like I mentioned before, your fridge, your freezer. Um, hot holding areas are also, um, things you could, you can take the temperature of. And then. Different foods, um, later we'll go over, um, deliveries. So you should always report the temperature of those foods as well. So you have immersion probes. So that's used to te- check temperature liquids like soup sauces or frying oils. Um, surface probes, um. Used to type, check the temperature of flat cooking equipment like griddles. Um, penetration probes, that's used to check the internal temperature of foods. And then air probes used to tech, check the temperatures inside coolers and ovens. So once you use these temperatures, you wanna, or, sorry, thermometers. You wanna make sure you're cleaning and san- sanitizing them. So they have to be washed, rinsed, and sanitized, um, and that'll also. Avoid cross-contamination between different foods. So. We can move on to the chapter case study. So at six AM.
Hmm, I'm sorry. Where we at?
The chapter case study.
Okay.
At six AM, Annie started her workday at a little bistro. After a quick meeting with the chef. Her first task was to make the broccoli quiches for the lunch special. By six fifteen AM, she had collected all the ingredients. She set salt, eggs, cream, butter, and cheese on the prep table. On her last trip to the cooler, she got the broccoli. It took over an hour to wash and chop it. Finally, Annie was able to make the quiche filling. Leaving the leftover eggs and cream on the table, she got the pre-made ke- quiche crust from the freezer and poured the filling. By the time she got the quiches in the oven, it was ten forty-five AM. Twenty-five minutes later, Annie checked the quiches. They were supposed to bake for around thirty minutes. However, she did not want to overcook them. The chef said their inter- internal temperature needs to be a hundred and fifty-five degrees Fahrenheit. Annie used an infrared thermometer to check the temperature of one quiche in two places. The readings were in the correct range. She took the quiches out of the oven and set them on a table to cool. While the quiche is cool, Annie went to work making fruit salad. She washed her hands and put gloves on. As she headed back to the prep table with the melon, strawberries, and grapes, she knows the eggs and cream she left out. She quickly put them back in the cooler. Then she wiped down the table and started prepping the melon. What's an Annie do wrong?
I think first of all, starting through, yeah, she put the eggs and the cream back in the refrigerator, and they had been out since six AM that morning. Um, I think that was way too long, um, as far as her temperature as well for the. Um, quiche. She didn't wanna overcook them, but I don't see if they said, you said she, Annie. She used the temperature in one quiche in two places. I don't know if she should have did all of them or just one, but.
So that one, um. She used the wrong kind of thermometer. So she should have used a probe thermometer. And a probe thermometer is for, is used to measure the internal temperature of foods.
Okay. Um. And I'm not sure about. What else she had made done because as far as her cheese and eggs, I knew that, but. Not sure. It took her a long time to prepare it though, before she could even get it in the oven. That was kinda disturbing to me. That was kinda disturbing to me.
Right, so she also didn't clean and sanitize the table um after she prepared the quiches. And before she started cutting the melon to make the fruit salad. Um and then she didn't wash her hands before making the quiche either after her meeting. Right, she should have thrown away the leftovers instead of putting them in the fridge.
Definitely gotta put them back in the fridge, you know, um well, I won't. I know when I was younger, my dad used to always leave the butter out and things. And as I got older, I would always tell him, no, don't leave that butter out. And I do also understand that products have changed over the years too, the quality of how they make things. And he would always go, it's gonna be okay, okay, and I do believe back in the day, it may have been okay. But um also, we lived in Michigan, it was always cold as well, room temperature was always cold. For us, we could put our stuff outside in the window, never use a refrigerator, water pops, whatever. So but now, I had done it once before, left it out, came back in and actually smelled that it was not good. And it hadn't been, it may have been like from when I got. Ready to go to work and then came back right after work to bake. It wasn't working for me, I just was not comfortable, not even knowing a whole lot of this, but I used my smell test, you know, like. So I learned a couple of things on YouTube on how when you do or haven't had the room temperature option. You know, I learned some tricks and hacks where I just start looking, putting, you know, your eggs in some warm water or. And just being able to make sure that they're not sitting out for a long period of time. And um even cutting your butter in down in slices opposed to letting it stay whole. While you're allowing it to come to room temperature.
Or allows it to warm up faster.
Correct, yeah, or even use the microwave then use the product right after you microwave it to um batter. So yeah, I learned some of those things, but I am very skeptical about the products these days we use.
Yeah, um our products are very processed here, so like in the UK. They have. Our eggs here are refrigerated in the store, theirs are shelf stable, so they sit on the shelf. And not in a refrigerator, I think it's also the same with their milk. They don't refrigerate their milk either, it sits on the shelf, so. You just have to kinda be aware of, you know. Standards for food here than they might have there, um and that also comes with like. Um pasteurization, things like that, um and just the way that the foods are treated before they come to life.
Okay. And again, it goes back to our chapter one about where our products are coming from. You know, making sure how it's delivered, how is it taken care of prior to getting to you, cuz I wouldn't have never thought about. The delivery truck being totally locked, you know, and. I never thought about. But this is valuable, thank you.
Yeah, so that might've been the case back then, but now we probably wanna put everything in the fridge.
Definitely.
Yeah, so chapter five is the flow of food, purchasing, receiving, and storage. So the study questions we're gonna go over are, what is an approved reputable supplier? What are the criteria to accept or reject food during receiving? How should food be labeled and dated? And how should food and non-food items be stored to prevent time temperature abuse and contamination? So before you accept any deliveries, you wanna make sure the um food you purchase is safe. Um so you wanna use an approved reputable supplier, and we talked about that in chapter two. Um and then you wanna see the reports um from the suppliers. From the USDA, the FDA, or um a third-party inspector, and then there are. Different practices that they use um to make sure that the products are safe. So the different practices are good manufacturing practices or good agriculture practices, so. Um the inspection report, show review, receiving and storage, processing, shipping, cleaning and sanitizing. Personal hygiene, staff training, recall programs, and H A C C P program or other food safety system. Um for the supplier. So when you're going to receive food, um you wanna make sure that the. Inspection process is smooth and safe, so you wanna inspect the food. When you receive it from the supplier. So you wanna train specific staff to receive the food. So in the book, you can see um they're inspecting the produce to make sure that there's nothing wrong with it. Um providing them with tools like thermometers and scales um. And then we'll talk about a little bit more about thermometers later in the chapter, that'll be one of the um. Points that we'll go over, and then make sure enough trained staff are available to um receive. And inspect food items properly. So you wanna deliver them as soon as, or you wanna inspect them as soon as they are delivered. So you wanna start the inspection with a delivery truck, so checking for signs of contamination. Um inspecting the overall condition of the vehicle, looking for signs of pests. And if there are, it seems like there are any problems, you wanna reject the delivery, so. Then you wanna do a visual inspection of food items. You also wanna make sure that they are received at the correct temperature, so that's where the thermometers come in. Um you wanna be um checking and recording the temperature of the food from the trucks um. Some trucks are refrigerated, some are freezer trucks, and then some are just regular that transport like produce and things. So the freezer and refrigerator trucks, you definitely wanna make sure um that no food has. Thought or it's gone to an unsafe temperature, and then there are ways that you can tell that it has, and we'll go over that as well. So key drop deliveries, this is another way um producers deliver food to your business. So you wanna make sure it is a reputable um producer. And a key drop delivery is when you receive food after hours. And the delivery service brings it into your business. So you wanna make sure it's an approved source. Um it was placed in a correct storage location to. Retain the required temperature. Um it is protected from contamination in storage, it is not being contaminated and is presented well. So if you wanna reject an item, you wanna tell the delivery person exactly what's wrong with the item, so. If it's not to the right temperature, if it looks like it's been tampered with, if the packaging is damaged. Things like that, you wanna make sure you notify them why you're rejecting that item specifically. Um getting a signed adjustment or credit slip before giving the item back to the person. And then logging incident incident on the invoice or on the receiving document. Um just so you know, you make sure that you have record of why you why you sent it back. So you also wanna be um cognizant of any recalls, so. I'm sure you know, there's always recalls on like romaine lettuce, things like that. So if there are recalls, you wanna make sure that you're aware of that um. And that you don't risk, that you don't accept any food that has been recalled, so you wanna make sure that you're um. Usually a recall will have, when they put a recall out, it'll have like identification numbers. For the food, so you wanna make sure that the identification numbers don't match up if there's a recall, um and then just kind of. Overthinking what you wanna accept um if there is a recall on the item. So when notified of a recall, you wanna match the information from the recall notice of the item, including the manufacturing ID. The manufacturer's ID, um the time the item was manufactured, and the item's use by date. You wanna remove the item from inventory and place it in a secure and appropriate location. Um it has to be stored separately from where the other food is stored um. Also utensils or equipment, um linen, single-use items, gloves, um employee uniforms, things like that. Label the items in a way that it will prevent it from being placed back in inventory. So do not use and do not discard um are two things that you can put on there. And then refer to the vendor's notifications or recall notices what to what to for what to do with the item, so. Sometimes they'll just say, you know, just throw it out, or sometimes they'll want you to return it, um so you wanna make sure you do either one of those. So when receiving food, you want to use thermometers to check the food temperature um. When it's delivered to you. So for meat, poultry, and fish, um you wanna s- insert the stem of the thermometer into the thickest part. Of the food. So um. Vacuum packed and sous vide foods, that's reduced oxy- oxygen packaging. Um you want to insert the thermometer stem in between the two packages. And make sure not to puncture it as well. And then for other packaged foods, um they can come in containers or anything like that. Um you wanna open the packaging and insert the thermometer into the container. Um to get an accurate reading of the food. You don't ever wanna um take the temperature from the outside of the container, it's not accurate. So packaging um. Food items and non-food items should be packaged correctly. Um you wanna make sure they're delivered in their original packaging with the manufacturer's label. You don't want them to like take it out and put it in any other packaging. Um so it should be sealed, it should have, you know, the manufacturer's logo on it, things like that. So if you have any items that are damaged, you wanna reject them, so if they have dents um. In the seams or in the body of a can, missing labels, swelling or bulging ends. So that usually um lets you know that a product has gone bad um. Or rust on the can. So that's basically showing you that it wasn't stored properly. So you don't wanna accept any cases or packages that can, that appear to have been tampered with either. Um you wanna reject items that have been touched by liquid, so. With anything with leaks, um dampness, or water stains, you can visibly see it. Um if something is wet on paper packaging. And it dries, it'll look wrinkled, so that's another way you'll be able to tell. Um rejecting items with signs of pests or pest damage, so if you see any holes, droppings, things like that, you wanna reject the items. And then dates um. All your food should be correctly labeled, so you don't wanna accept anything that had that has a missing use by date or a missing sell-by date. So the sell-by date is how long the store should display the product. And then a use-by date is how long or is how the time in which you should consume it at home or in your business um before you. Throw it out. So. You also wanna make sure that you um check the food quality, so poor food quality can be. A sign that the food was time temperature abused, so if it's moldy or has an abnormal color. Um or if it's moist when it should be dry, the example they gave here is like salami. It should be dry, but if it's moist, then you know there's probably something, you know, it was it was warm for a period in time. Um and don't. I'm sorry?
Well, I was gonna say in chicken, I learned that one about the stickiness of a chicken, when you get chicken. The capacity be um contaminated or no good, just no good to use.
Right, so that was actually the next one, um textured, so reject meat, fish, or poultry that is slimy, sticky, or dry. Um also rejected if has soft flesh that leaves an imprint when you touch it. So it shouldn't really like have any give. Or it should have like a bounce, but if it just you press into it and it leaves your fingerprint, you don't want that. Um reject food with an abnormal or unpleasant odor, like the butter, for example. You wouldn't wanna use that cuz you can immediately tell um that it's no good to use. And then you also wanna just reject any item that doesn't meet your um company standards for quality. So if you're paying for an item, you want the item that, you know, has the same quality. That you want to use in your products because you wanna give your customers the same quality every time. So we're gonna do this, wanna apply your knowledge, um so. Number one is dirty packaging, so this is apply or reject. Write an A next to the food items you should accept and write R next to food items you should reject. So dirty packaging, you wanna reject. Fresh fish with an internal temperature of fifty degrees Fahrenheit, you wanna reject. It should be let, it should be at forty-one or less. Um torn packaging, you wanna reject. For eggs, um an air temperature of forty-five degrees Fahrenheit, you wanna accept. Um repackaged cans of food, you wanna reject that since it didn't come in the initial packaging from the manufacturer. This is a clean intact box, you wanna accept that. Um seven is milk at forty-five degrees Fahrenheit, that's okay to accept. And then cooked rice at a hundred and forty degrees Fahrenheit, you wanna accept that. So moving on to labeling, so you want to label all the items that are not in their original ca- containers for use. Um food labels should include the common name of the food or a statement that clearly and accurately identifies it. Um so if you have salt and sugar. You wanna label it salt and sugar because you're gonna get them mixed up, they're very similar looking um. So if it's not in a container that it originally came in or a container that easily identifies. That it is that um item or ingredient without, you know, specifically saying that, then you wanna label it. Um and then it's not necessary to label item if it won't be mistaken for another item. So labeling through this package onsite for retail sale. So if you are selling your food via retail. Um the label must include the common name of the food or a statement that clearly identifies it. The quantity of the food in that packaging. So like sometimes we'll say um, most of the time it's in ounces. The food. A list of ingredients and sub-ingredients in descending order by weight, this is necessary if the item contains two or more ingredients. So if you're doing a cake, you're gonna use flour the most. So it should be flour first, and then your next ingredient, and then the following. Um until the least amount that you use, which I'm not sure. Yeah, that's what I thought, um. Right, a list of artificial colors and flavors in the food. Chemical preservatives. Name and place of business of the manufacturer, hacker, or distributor. And source of each major food allergen contained in the food.
Should that be a separate um label, the allergy? Label opposed to just being on the label itself, cuz I do have optional nuts on there.
So most of the time, it is a separate label, it usually says may contain. And then it'll say peanuts, eggs, uh milk, uh what's another big one? Fish, like things like that, um it will say may contain um separately. And then you also wanna make sure you um mark your items with the dates that they're good by. So ready to eat food can be stored for only seven days if it's held at forty-one degrees Fahrenheit. Or lower.
Okay. I get that question often. And I usually say about seven days, long as it's in room temperature, then that question goes, well, what is room temperature? And I'm like seventy or less, and then I read this, I think somewhere earlier this week. And I'm thinking, oh wow, I've been saying it, but I just knew only because my dad, again. He had the bakery, he was, you know, I know how to do my kitchen, but he had the bakery, and I guess I picked up on so much more than I thought. As a kid.
Yeah, kinda like clicks now that you're, you know, learning. Yeah, kinda like clicks now that you're, you know, learning the information in a book, yeah. So the example here is October first, um, preparing potato salad, and then October seventh would be the discard date. So when storing the food, um, you wanna rotate your foods or your ingredients. So you wanna um, use a first-in, first-out method. So this method is, if you get new, like a new shipment of ingredients, you wanna put those in the back and use what you had already first. Um, so this prevents you from having to throw things out, um, letting your foods expire, things like that. Um, or, you know, using an expired product, and that might make somebody sick. Um, and that presents hazards to your business. So you wanna identify the foods, items used by or expiration date. Um, store items with the earliest used by or expiration dates in the front of items with later dates. Once items are shelved, using those items stored in front first, and throwing off food that's passed its manufacturers' use by or expiration date. So when storing food in, um, a refrigerator, you do wanna use a storage order. So the storage order is from top to bottom is ready-to-eat food. So these are things like um, fruits, vegetables, um, pre- already-prepared foods, um, ready-to-eat foods are gonna be first. Um, seafood will be next, um, so that's fish, um, shellfish, crab, lobster, uh, anything like that, um, that will be second. Then you wanna do whole cuts of beef and pork. Um, ground meat and ground fish will be after that, and then you wanna put whole and ground poultry on the bottom.
And this is how is that from top to bottom, if you were using these items in your refrigerator, should the refrigerator be labeled to that the employees know where if they're not pretty familiar with them?
Um, I think that could be something helpful that you could do if they're not aware or if they're not trained um, to just do that automatically. Um, I think that that could definitely be a helpful tool to use is labeling. And then we will go over the chapter review case study. So a shipment was delivered to Francesca's Italian restaurant on a warm summer day. Alice, who was in charge of receiving, began inspecting the shipment. First, she inspected the bags of frozen shrimp. Alice noticed the ice crystals inside the bags and took that as a good sign the shrimp were still frozen. Next, she used a thermometer to test the temperature of the vacuum-packed back, packages of ground beef, which was forty degrees Fahrenheit. Then Alice used the same thermometer to measure the temperature of the fresh salmon. The salmon was on ice, although it seemed as though much of the ice had melted. The internal temperature of the salmon was forty-three degrees Fahrenheit, and the flesh sprung back after she touched it. She accepted the ground beef and the salmon. Once she finished receiving the food, Alice was ready to put it into storage. First, she carried the bags of shrimp to the freezer. Next, she wheeled several cases of fresh ground beef and the fresh salmon over to the walk-in cooler. She noticed that the readout on the outside of the cooler indicated thirty-nine degrees Fahrenheit. Alice pushed, Alice pushed through the cold curtains and bumped into a sock pot of soup as she moved inside. She moved the soup over and made a space for the ground beef. She was able to put the salmon on this shi- on the se- on the shelf above the soup. What receiving and storage mistakes did Alice make?
Well, first of all, her thermometer, she used the same one for the beef, for the salmon.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't believe she was supposed to do that. Um, as far as the shelf location for the I believe, for the, um, she put it on there with the soup, the ground beef. I think she, I say she made a space for the ground beef, and it, she was able to put the salmon on the shelf above the soup. But what happened to the ground beef, the food, she may well, I don't, they on the same shelf.
Mm-hmm.
No, that's a no-no.
Right.
Put them on the same shelf. Um, I'm not sure about the temperatures. I wasn't quite sure if the temperatures for any of the things she was using was correct. Were they?
So the salmon should have been rejected, because it was at um, forty-three degrees, and it should have been at forty-one.
Okay.
And then the shrimp should have been rejected, because it had ice crystals. So that's usually an indication that the food was thawed and then it froze again.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, so that's unsafe. Um,
Hmm.
And yeah, she put the raw salmon above the ready-to-eat food, and she should have checked the temperatures of the food stored inside, um, the cooler.
Hmm, now you should be having um, records about the temperatures on each time you check it. If you have someone monitoring the refrigerator, it should be recorded or somewhere nearby refrigerator to know that these were the temperatures.
Um, I think you should be recording the temperature of the refrigerator, um, when you do check it.
Alright.
Alright, and that is our study session.
Well, we did good. I will go over this one again. I did see our last week's YouTube being posted. And I looked and was like, that's me. Oh my god, no, I looked at it like, oh, I know her.
Yes, so, um, if you wanna, you know, relook back at this, um, you can, it should be up this week, um, somehow, let me stop the recording.